I just emailed you the list of the council and staff members that are on the line. And it's five thirty.
Okay, I just missed taking a minute, but um, there we go. All right, um, welcome, and I'd like to say hello. This is Finance Chair Kate Fields, fourth ward councilperson. I'd like to welcome you to Flint City Council Budget Session.
Point of order, point of order.
The purpose, the purpose of this session is to discuss Mayor Neely's...
Point of, point of order.
Mr. Mays, there is a point of order.
Point of order.
If you're quiet, you're out of order, Mr. Mays. The purpose of this session is to discuss Mayor Neely's...
I am, a point of order is always an order, point of order. I'll appeal the ruling at a check.
Mr. Mays, this is your first warning. This is your first warning, Mr. Mays, you are out of order.
I'm appealing the ruling.
There is no point of order or point of information.
You gotta have some order in a meeting.
Now, I would like... I would like to, Mr. Mays, if you've been in this meeting, you need to be quiet until I finish reading what I'm going to read.
Listen, Doug, give me the president, Galloway. This is, I ain't never seen nothing like it.
All right, Mr. Mays, I'm so sorry to lose you so early in the meeting. Please mute Mr. Mays.
No, you can't, don't, don't mute me, Alma DeVina. We got a point of order, don't mute me.
The purpose of this session is to discuss Mayor Neely's... I'm going to say this to council one time, and anyone who keeps blurting out is going to get a warning. I would like you to allow me to finish reading what I want to read here.
Point of order.
And you're out of order, Ms. Galloway, I think that's Ms. Galloway. If you will just have a bit of patience. All right, you're out of order, Ms. Galloway, DeVina, please remove Ms. Galloway.
You can't, you can't be out of order.
Please move, mute her.
I'll, 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 I'll appeal that ruling.
DeVina?
And I'll second this appeal.
Just one second.
DeVina, have you muted Mr. Mays and Ms. Galloway?
Point of order, and Ms. Winfrey Carter supported it.
Councilwoman Fields.
Almost.
Ms. Fields, if you're gonna run a lawless meeting, you need to tell us how the, the proper order of this meeting is. A point of order is in order. Fields, a point of order is in order.
I'm trying to, but you're not allowing me to. You are interrupting this meeting before it's even really begun. And I was going to explain all that. But DeVina, are you on the line?
Yes, they have been muted.
Thank you. Now, I'm going to continue, and for the rest of council, if you'll have some patience, allow me to read what I have prepared. And by the way, the people who've been muted can still listen to the meeting. I'm trying to, but you're... Okay? The purpose of this session is to discuss Mayor Neely's proposed fiscal year 2021 and fiscal year 21, '22 budgets. My hope is that this will be an informative, professional, pleasant, and effective session. This session, there are no rules for budget departmental hearings, which this is a form of that, this budget session. There are no written rules. So, the, I would first like to have a moment of silence for all the people who have passed away due to COVID-19 and other issues, um, especially noting that we have lost two City Hall employees who will be greatly missed. You know, this session can be followed and/or heard by going online Then, I would like to acknowledge who is currently on the line with us. City council persons are, and I would ask you to identify yourself, starting with, uh, Ward One, unfortunately has already been removed, with the second ward.
Maurice Davis.
Are you... Eighth, third ward?
Sanzino Guerra.
Uh, fifth ward?
Jerry Winfrey Carter.
Seventh ward has unfortunately been muted. Um, let's see, eighth ward, excuse me, diners six, is sixth ward on?
Yes. Yes, Councilwoman Winfrey.
Thank you. Um, eighth ward?
President Griggs.
Ninth ward?
Eva Worthing.
Thank you. And from the administration, as I understand it, we have Mr. Edwards. Are you there, Mr. Edwards?
Yes, I am.
Uh, Mr. Hill?
I am here.
Mr. Benzick?
I am present.
Thank you. And, uh, Stacy, I'm used to Bathy, but Stacy Cake?
Present.
Jack. How do you say that, Stacy?
It's cake, like the food.
Thank you so much. Now, I'm going to read the disorderly persons ordinance 31-10, which will be in effect during this session. Any person violating this ordinance will be given one warning, and if necessary, will then be muted and unable to participate in the session. Any person that persists in disrupting this meeting will be in violation of Flint City Code Section 31-10, disorderly conduct, assault, and battery, and disorderly persons, and will be subject to arrest for a misdemeanor. Any person who prevents the peaceful and orderly conduct of any meeting will be given one warning. If they persist in disrupting the meeting, that individual will be subject to arrest. Violators shall be removed from meetings. I'm now going to read the eight submitted public comments, and then I will explain the meeting parameters. The cutoff time for submitted comments online was five twenty. Any comments submitted after this point in time will be read at the next council meeting. The first council comment is from Jennifer DeBuck, who says, "Can someone on council please explain who we call or email for blight, neighborhood cleanup, and cars illegally parked in front yards help? We have tried to reach Duvarl Murdoch to no avail. Are there ward-specific neighborhood officers anymore? An updated list and contact info on the city website and Facebook would be helpful. Please advise, Jen DeBuck." The next comment is from Amber Jacobs. The comment is, "I'd like to highlight a major concern. Why is Angela Wheeler and the city's legal department ignoring and/or blocking Freedom of Information Act requests? Don't try to blame Corona. This has been an issue since the Weaver administration took office in 2015. But the new so-called truth and transparency is honor claimed he was going to be an open book. Need I remind the council and the longtime city attorney Angela Wheeler, the act contains a provision legally requiring agencies to respond to FOIA requests within twenty days. I speak on good authority that FOIA requests in the city attorney's place of residence, grand blank, are all responded to within seven days." The next comment is from Joseph King, who says, "To Flint City Council..." From Joseph King, Vice President of Ethics and Accountability Board for City of Flint. "After reviewing the proposed city budget for the year 2020 and 2021, I am concerned about the recommendation to cut the ombudsman's budget and remind the council that the city charter mandate that the ombudsman office receive a minimum of $250,000 per year. I am fullest aware that this budget is not council budget. I just don't want to see this slip by everyone. I am convinced, just as you have worked with the EAB board since we were appointed, that you would continue to support and uphold the charter that was voted on by the resident of this city who also voted for each of you to carry out their wish. I am also concerned about the hiring of infirm by City of Flint that would recommend to the city to disregard a mandate of the charter. Thank you for your time, Joe King, Second Ward, EAB Vice Chairman." The next one is from Tanya Dorsey, the ombudsman, to City Council, date May 18th, 2020, regarding 2020-2021 budget. "As the appointed ombudsman for the City of Flint, I am tasked with assisting residents with complaints regarding civil services or civil servants. The charter has prescribed many requirements for the office of the ombudsman. In order to fulfill the duties as prescribed, the City of Flint Charter mandates that the office of the ombudsman be given a minimum budget in the amount of $250,000. I request that City Council not approve a budget that funds the office of the ombudsman less than the $250,000 as mandated in the City of Flint Charter. I would like to put my concern on the record regarding the City of Flint's potential removal of funds that would put the operating budget under the charter's $250,000 mandate. I request that council not approve a budget that takes the operating budget for the office of the ombudsman below the charter mandated $250,000. Thank you for your time and consideration, Tanya L. Dorsey, ombudsman." Next? Uh, from Camara Robinson. "Mayor Neely and City Council, another viral national news story this week because of more violent crime at a Flint liquor store. All the comments on Facebook mark us, calling Flint hopeless, full of nothing but party stores, blight, crime, and dysfunctional government. This is our reputation." And then it cites a headline, "Flight at Flint Liquor Store Leaves Shopper Shot After Security Guard Enforces Capacity Rules." Front page of the Detroit Free Press. It then has the, um, internet link to that story. "These millionaire party store owners prey on Flint's hopelessness. Shut some of these stores down, limit their hours to nine P.M., find them for litter, kick at them for loider, and stop rubber stamping licensed transfers. Do something, please. Camara Robinson, Second Ward." And then here's another one, from, um, Pastor Alan Gilbert. "To President Galloway, Vice President Davis, and Councilwoman Fields, as well as the entire City Council, I want to express my alarm at the proposed 2020-21 recommended budget. The ombudsman department 290.100 budget is cut $142,845. The charter mandates a $250,000 budget for this office. I want to encourage the City Council to uphold the charter. The EAB supports the City Council in correcting this recommended violation. The City of Flint website has a recommended budget at $107,155. For this reason, the recommended budget should not be approved by the City Council. God bless and be safe, Ward Seven, EAB Chair, Pastor Alan Gilbert." And then the, last one. No, uh, a couple more. From Kim Brown. "Dear City of Flint, we'd just like to thank Robert Benzick and Betty Weidman and their crew for their assistance with the neighborhood issue in Ward Eight. We know the Public Works Department tends to get a lot of flack, but in our experience, they've been empathetic, prompt, and professional in resolving an issue and elevating the safety of our neighborhood. Kim Brown, Ward Eight." And then the last one is from Ethics and Accountability Board member, Lois Driscoll. "Public speaking comments for City Council meeting being held by video conferencing on May 19th, 2020 being submitted to City Clerk Anais Brown. As an appointed member of the Ethics and Accountability Board member by the former Oval Dr. Karen Weaver, I would like to make a public comment to the Flint City Council as a whole. As the former chair of the Ethics and Accountability Board, we have tried to gain the respect of the City Council and new mayoral administration almost to no avail. Due to the pandemic, we find ourselves once again coming up on the short end of the stick during the budget process with the Neely administration. We have met with Mayor Neely, and we're told that the previous resolution that was voted unanimously by the City Council in 2019, awarding the Ethics and Accountability Board $50,000, had been shredded, which was a lie. Any action of that kind would speak to the lack of integrity of the clerk's office, which we knew was untrue, but again, was an attempt to not fund or address our needs. We have been lied to, given the runaround, forced to operate out of a one-man office for months, and moved more times than I want to mention. This lack of respect for the office of the ombudsman is indicative of the value this administration has for the citizens in the City of Flint. None of you or the mayor-elect would be in power if it was not for the citizens of the City of Flint, and we intend to remind the citizens at every opportunity, especially during an election year. This board was created by the citizens to protect any injustices that they perceive occurring. It is apparent that the administration, once in office, has abandoned the very citizens that elected him to that position. How are we to protect the citizens if this City Council does not ensure that we have the funding to do an effective job? Pandemic or not, this board is here to stay and needs to be a priority for the City Council before any budget is approved. The new charter has allocated $250,000 annually as a minimum budget, and it's a very easy request if the City Council not pass any budget that does not include that amount, preferably more. Your actions are being viewed by the world and will reflect the value you place on the citizens of Flint. Respectfully yours, Lois Driscoll, EAB member." Okay, now, I would like to read about the parameters of this session. Number one, this is just a budget session. It is not a special council meeting, nor is it a regular council meeting, nor is it a committee meeting. There are no rules...
Excuse me, um, Councilwoman Fields?
Yes, Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Um, before you get into that, I would like, I would like to say something. I would like to...
Good to wait until I reach this, and then I will give you the floor, Ms. Winfrey Carter.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Fields.
Thank you.
Soon as you finish, I would like to have the floor, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Parameters of this session. This session begins at five thirty P.M. and ends at seven thirty P.M. promptly. There is no official roll call, and a quorum is not necessary for this session. There is no official called order of the session. There is no set agenda, therefore there are no changes or additions to same. There will be no referrals or motions. Although council staff are facilitating this session, they are not set up to take minutes or votes. Due to the governor's executive orders for virtual gatherings of legislative bodies during the pandemic, there will be public comments, but no council response. This session is otherwise similar to the departmental budget hearings council has always held. There will be no points of order or points of information. If any council person wishes to be recognized, please just say your name, and you will have that opportunity. All council persons are expected to stay on task and on topic. Any other discussion will be considered out of order, and the violator will be given one warning. Further or continued digressions by any council person will result in that council person being muted and removed from participation in the session. We will begin by going in rounds of three minutes each of speaking, starting with Ward Nine and going backwards to Ward One. If you wish, you may respond to public speakers during your first round. If after this session you still have additional questions, you may A. submit your written questions to the Finance Chair, and those questions will then be forwarded to the administration for written answers, and/or B. request additional time on the next council meeting of Tuesday, May 26th, to discuss your concerns and/or questions. Adoption of a budget, whether amended or as proposed, will occur on Monday, June 1st, as required by the city charter. So, before I let, um, Ms. Worthing of Ninth Ward, I have her first three minutes. Um, Ms. Winfrey Carter, you had something you wish to say?
Yes. Now, you know what? I think, and I, and, and, and you need to be fair, um, Councilwoman Fields. I think you need to, um, let Councilwoman Galloway and Councilman Mays back onto this meeting. You did not give them a fair chance. And if you're not gonna do it, I'm gonna appeal your ruling, because based on our City Council rules, a point of order is always, it is always recognized. And you ignored their point of order. And that's not right.
Are you finished? Okay, I'll respond to that. Unfortunately, neither Ms. Galloway nor Mr. Mays were willing to just even hold their comments until I could finish reading this. And I have just explained to you, I am being actually very fair. This is being held, just there are no rules for a budget session.
I'm gonna appeal it.
There, there's no ruling. There, there is no point of order or point of information in a budget hearing.
Councilwoman Fields, a point of order, a point of order is not...
Ms. Winfrey, it is not covered in our council rules. Now, you are out of order, and I would like very much for you to stay on the line
You know what?
and be able to participate.
I'm off.
I'm sorry to hear that. Okay, now we'll start with Ms. Worthing. Do you have any comments? You have three minutes, Ms. Worthing.
My only comments, um, right now, and then I'll have questions later, uh, for the budget, but is, it's unfortunate that we have members that just cannot follow the rules. I, you know, for, um, Mays to just immediately come in and call a point of order, and nothing had been done yet. It's just a chance to get the floor and take control and distract. And I applaud you, Ms. Fields, for allowing the rest of us who wanna get work done to get it done, uh, and not have to go through endless points of orders and points of information, especially when they're not even relevant in, in a finance budget meeting. And it's also unfortunate that Ms. Winfrey Carter didn't understand that after you read those rules. We, we've had this problem before during budget meetings with others not understanding. It's not a council meeting. But I would, um, encourage the rest of us that are here, um, let's get some work done. And that's all for now.
Thank you. And, uh, excuse me for just a moment, um, Mr. Griggs, before you start, uh, you know, can, can you possibly time this? I can't both talk in time. And tell me when three minutes are up? If necessary?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay, next is Ward Eight, that's Mr. Griggs. Mr. Griggs?
Yes, uh, this is to Mr. King, Ms. Dorsey, and Mr. Gilbert. Uh, I'm not quite sure why the ombuds, uh, or the Ethics and Accountability, uh, Board was cut from 250,000 annual down. I'm sure we'll be able to resolve this, uh, this evening, uh, since our administration is present for this meeting. So, please bear with us while we try to figure out what's going on. And I fully support, you know, you getting 250,000 a year for the Ethics and Accountability Board. Uh, the extra 50 to 60,000, and I think that, that you're wanting, I'm not quite positive on what that is. But I think we can get through this without, uh, dragging down the present administration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Griggs. Um, that would be Mr. Winfrey, Herb Winfrey, Fifth Ward. Mr. Winfrey, are you there?
Yes, ma'am. To the lady that, that talked about, uh, or that mentioned the, the stores that are open and all of the violence that takes place, I do think she's right. We, we do need to, to clamp down on that, on that, that kind of behavior, because it affects the folks that are in that area in our city as well. So, I will be talking to, uh, the city administrator and others to see what we can do about that, because I've been getting some complaints in my ward as well. And then, um, lastly, uh, Finance Chair, uh, I, I too believe that there should be order in meetings, but I've been on the council now a little bit more than five years, and I've never been in a meeting where a point of order was not recognized and was not a part of the, the, uh, the meeting. And if there is an appeal, I think the point of order and the appeal should be recognized. And I've never been in a meeting, uh, like that, and I've never been in a meeting where we can just make the rules as we go. I missed why Councilwoman Galloway and Councilman Mays, uh, were dismissed from the meeting. But if it's what I think, I would just, I would like to say that I, I think a point of order is always, regardless of what kind of meeting, we've gotta have some order. As you have said, and I agree, you gotta have some order in a meeting. But how do we get the floor and get our thoughts out if we don't use the point of order and the point of information? And according to what I've read, it's supposed to be recognized. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, uh, you're welcome. Um, we do not have Fifth and Seventh Ward on the line, so, um, I will just respond. I'll say, Mr. Winfrey, um, I will make a point of contacting you after this meeting to discuss the issue you just brought up. But, uh, I want to tell you that, um, this has been thoroughly researched. There are no rules for a budget session. Uh, it's like a departmental hearing, so it is not a meeting, and we don't follow meeting rules for this. So, um, you know, I will discuss it with you in depth after this, uh, hopefully to your satisfaction. So, I'm not ignoring your concern. Um, I just would like to move ahead with the topic at hand so we can make the most of having, um, the administration here to help answer any questions or concerns. Okay, Mr. Guerrero, Third Ward?
Yeah, I got nothing to say at this time.
Okay, Mr. Davis, Second Ward?
Uh, thank you, Ms. Fields. I'd like to say this, I'm looking forward to this budget here, 'cause there's so much business that need to be done at this time. But fires that, that caller with that liquor store's second shooting, uh, incident, I should say. Uh, I'm, I'm, I'm very frustrated how these liquor stores able to function when other businesses, all businesses need to be open. But why are they open after nine P.M.? People not buying toilet paper, they getting liquor and everything else, and, and they just, uh, loitering around them stores. They trifling how they keep their parking lot up, they're blight to the neighborhood. I'm about ready to get with Mr. Clyde and whoever over blight, as well as NSO officers, as well as Chief Hart. All of them folks need to be shut down if that's what they gonna do to this community. All of them liquor stores, it need to be a... All of them liquor stores, it need to be a fair warning right across the board. Blight is blight in these liquor stores, ain't nothing but blight in a impoverished neighborhood. And it's very frustrating because not a lot of our crime begins at these old liquor stores with these folks standing around and then no safe distancing, no masks, and they doing everything against what we trying to do in this city. If we gonna turn it around, let's start with these liquor stores immediately. Thank you for indulging.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Dave, for our second round, back to Ms. Worthing, do you have a question of the administration or something you would like to talk about pertaining to the proposed budget? Ms. Worthing?
Oh, yeah, I'm here. I did actually have a question about street lighting, and I don't know if it's really an actual budget question, but are, can it be explained, can it be explained again which lights are covered and which aren't? I think our street lighting was increased last year. And also, if you own a vacant lot, or you own a lot that doesn't have a home on it, do you still pay for garbage pickup and street lighting? I've had that question asked and I was just wondering the world's on that as well.
Okay, the administration, Mr. Edwards, or Mr. Scorsone, or Amanda, who would like to respond?
I can respond, this is Amanda.
Okay.
For vacant lots, you do not pay a garbage fee on that, but you can pay a lighting fee. With some vacant lots, you can go to assessments and have that vacant lot combined with your main lot, and in that way you wouldn't be subject to having the lighting fee on that, on the vacant lot parcel anymore because you can combine that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, Mr. Griggs, you're next. Was that all Ms. Worthing?
Yes, for now, yeah.
Okay. Mr. Griggs, you're next. Do you have additional, something you'd like to ask or comment on, or?
Yeah, I forgot to mention Ms. Kim Brown. Thank you for your compliments to the Public Works Department, and I agree with you about the convenience stores. I think they should close at nine o'clock to be in line with the mayor's nine o'clock In regards to street lighting, there was a stabbing in the parking lot of Eisenhower Grade School a while back at night, and it's because there's no night light in the back side of Eisenhower in the parking lot. So hopefully we can get that covered while we discuss lighting in the budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Griggs. I'm Mr. Winfrey.
Thank you. My question is, I know I've read the charter and the charter does mention that the Ombudsman's Office would be, we would fund the Ombudsman's Office for two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. And I would like for someone from the administration to tell me why that's, how we can change that without changing the charter.
Would you like to respond? If you're Scorsone.
Can you give me this, Eric? Yeah. So, yeah, we recognize that we should have budgeted more for the Ombud's Office. It was just an oversight on our part, so we would recommend the city council amend the budget of the Ombud's person, and we can give you the exact figures that would be broken down by different categories so that it matches the two-hundred-and-fifty thousand.
Thank you, Mr. Scorsone.
All right. More questions? Mr. Winfrey?
No, ma'am, thank you.
Okay. When I ask then, Mr. Scorsone, we are not doing regular referrals for this, but I guess what I'm hearing is that you will send perhaps to all of council, ensuring that the clerk's office gets a copy of what that amount would be, so council can make that motion when they vote on the budget on June 1st?
That is correct, yes.
Perhaps you could have that prior to the next council meeting, which is on the sixth. That would be appreciated.
Yeah, we'll get it to you this week, yep.
Okay, thank you. I do have a quick question because any changes that council proposes to make, we have to say where, if we're saying where money's going to, we have to say where money's coming from. So where are you thinking that the balance of, I mean, if I remember correctly, I may be a little off, but it's something to the tune of a hundred-and-forty thousand and change, where would this money be coming from, do you think?
I'll have to look into that and I'll provide that information as well.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Guerrero, do you have any comments, questions?
Yeah, one of my, my questions was answered by Mr. Winfrey's question, too. I was concerned about the oversight, but I'm glad to hear you get an answer for the Ombudsman, correct funding. Just a quick question, do we plan on seeing any layoffs or anything like that in any department?
Would someone like to respond? Mr. Edwards, Mr. Scorsone, someone?
Yeah, yes, yes, I'm here. I would say, I would say-
Excuse me, Mr. Edwards, is that you that has music in background?
No, ma'am.
No? Okay, thank you. Proceed.
Yeah, I would say that this budget was put forth with the intent not to have layoffs and to try to keep the budget in alignment with that process. However, we're very much aware that from council standpoint-
Mr. Edwards, I'm so sorry to interrupt you once again, but someone needs to mute themselves. They have music going on the phone and it's difficult to hear. So I don't know who it is, but okay, it's quiet now. I'm sorry, Mr. Edwards, please proceed.
No problem. Yeah, it was our intent in the budget to try to ensure that we maintain staffing in all positions and that we would not have to proceed in that direction. However, we are aware that changes might be made with city council. So I really couldn't, you know, at this point, the administration probably couldn't give you a definitive answer because we will need to see a final budget and be able to know what we're, what has been passed and ultimately what we'll be working with.
Okay, Mr. Guerrero?
I have another question at this time, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Davis?
Yes, ma'am. I don't have no other question other than what already been brought up about, you know, the Ombudsman. Opposing the charter is very important, that's the constitution of the city. And by all means, whatever, by any means, we wanna make sure we uphold this charter. It all means we must uphold this charter. And if it calls for a two-fifty, whatever we need to do to button down to make sure that happens, as long as all hands on deck and we know what kind of situation we dealing with. I hope we can make sure we uphold our end of that charter. Thank you, thank you.
Okay, well, I'll take a turn on this round. Could you tell me, Chief Hart, or Mr. Scorsone, or anyone, but are we going to be able to maintain our current level of staffing with the police department? And do we currently have unfilled positions that are in the budget, but we just haven't filled them yet?
This is Chief Hart. We do have some positions that are within the budget that have not been filled. There are sixteen positions. We've also had three people that have retired over the last month. So we're totally down by nineteen at this point. The budget that is being proposed does allow for us to pick up those numbers. So if we stay where we are, then yes, we will be able to, and I'm working, interviewing people constantly, looking for candidates.
Okay, thank you. And I don't know if Chief Barton is on the line. Could he comment to the same question about the staffing of the fire department or someone?
Yes, that's Chief Barton, I'm on the line. We actually are in the same position as Chief Hart. We are currently down four positions just in the last week, the last month, I had one person leave and go to another department. As we always say, Flynn is kinda a training hub, people come here and they can leave. We had a firefighter leave for a substantial raise, but, and we had a retirement and two guys resign, and we're currently looking at some guys that have applied, so it's a possibility I could lose three or four more positions to other fire departments. But currently, the budget is as so to keep us mandated at eighty-three where we were at when the budget is proposed. And so at that point, we would have to hire, but during with the COVID and being able to do the testing and get those procedures done, we gotta find a way that we can test and hopefully we can hire people this summer.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Daley, to you, same question regarding street maintenance and fleet. Are you there, Mr. Daley?
Ms. Fields, I'll take it, it's Rob.
Okay, Rob, I was going to ask you next for DPW anyway, so go ahead.
Yes, I think across the board, the budget, at least in DPW, looks to kind of stand pat on staffing, but we are aware there could, you know, there might have to be some adjustments made. But as of now, the budget that's in front of you, I think, is for everybody to stand pat on their staffing.
Okay, and can you tell me, have we filled those positions that were posted? I believe we have a hiring freeze right now, but at the water treatment plant and water pollution control, do we have any openings that we've not filled?
We have some openings-
And are they likely to get new?
Yeah, we have some openings, I think, across the board in the utility. So I think there's some openings at the water service center, wastewater plant, and the water plant.
Do you know how many?
I don't know exactly how it is, but there is certainly a hiring freeze, so, but there's, I mean, there's several, I know there's several openings at the water service center. I think just the water department alone has approximately thirteen vacancies, so it's significant.
I know that the city clerk is not on the line, but the deputy clerk, Davina Donahue, is on the line. Davina, do you know, and can anyone tell me, I believe we have openings, postings for council staff, do you know if there are any others in the clerk's office?
No, I don't know. I think, and again, I can't really speak for the clerk, but I think that they were trying to make some part-time people full-time, that's all I know of, but I don't know of any openings, no.
Okay, well, Mr. Edwards, I do believe that we had posted, and I'm not sure how this hiring freeze affects all of this, but we had posted certainly a position to fill Davina's previous position now that she's deputy clerk, and I think we were even supposed to get yet another position. Do you know if any of those are posted?
No, I don't. No, no, I don't know at this time. I don't know if Charlie is on the line, Charlie McClendon. Is Charlie on the line? Okay, that's, I can get you that information. I can make a determination and find out and get you the appropriate information.
Okay. And can you explain to me how the hiring freeze affects positions that are open and have already been posted? Does that mean we're not hiring anyone, or are there essential jobs that we're still hiring for?
Yeah.
And are any of these positions in this current budget?
Okay, the first, well, the first part of that is that from the hiring freeze itself, it is the, you know, mayor's intention, administration's intent that right now, as we try to stabilize city government, and as we looked at the budget, that's how that came about in terms of not looking at hires at this time. But ultimately, you do have some critical areas like police and fire and DPW aspects that cannot be postponed, so to speak, those job positions. And so in certain circumstances, on a case-by-case basis, of looking at the critical need for that particular position.
Okay, well, I personally would, might like to take an appeal because I know how much work centers around the council office because without the ability to take minutes, transcribe them, etc., we can't even meet our legal FOIA obligations. So would you say the administration considers at least the one position of council staff critical? And is that in the budget?
I would say that that matter can be explored and we can look at, you know, whether that's available budgetary-wise first, and then from that proceed, if it, you know, in terms of, I understand, it isn't important, so I don't wanna make it, you know, out that it's not critical. So I'm saying that we can look at it, make a determination, make sure the monetary dollars are there to fulfill that request, and then work to get the approval from the mayor.
Okay, is Mr. Scorsone there? Maybe he could answer whether it is currently in the budget or not, that, at least that one position to the council office.
Yes, it is in the budget.
Thank you. So, Mr. Edwards, I guess the further discussion is just whether the administration considers that essential regarding the hiring. I guess there'll be additional conversations about that?
Yes, yes, I would, I would, I would say that, it would have to be some additional conversation. Not a no, but it's just that idea that there have been several appeals, so I'm just, I'll just say it like that directly to me concerning positions in various areas and the importance of those positions to fulfill the needs in those departments. So, and they have been seen as critical needs in those departments as a part of the overall city hall mission and city hall aspect, that's something that has to be reviewed and determined.
Okay. And I'm sorry, I am taking a lot of time, but I'm trying to go through departments. I guess the last really essential, I'm aware that Reed Erickson took employment elsewhere. Is Angela Wheeler on the line? Okay, well, does anyone, Mr. Edwards or Mr. Scorsone, do you know whether we have hired to fill that position and whether that's considered critical?
We have not hired that position at this time. My understanding is that there are other staff taking up those responsibilities, and I think it's really, we have to evaluate to see how critical that will be in some time period here.
Okay.
I think if I may, if I just may quickly to council, I think, you know, the idea here is simply that we want to, we wanna hire critical positions where necessary, but part of doing this freeze is the idea to assess the situation and our financial status, especially say over the next few months, to determine, you know, state budget- and our financial status, or especially, say, over the next few months, to determine, um, you know, state budget reductions, federal, um, relief for local governments, um, so I think, you know, that's why we're doing a freeze. It's not that we don't intend to ever fill a position or that we would like, I think all of these positions are critical in some way, but, you know, we need to evaluate the situation, uh, to protect the people that are already here, for one thing. And so I think just to understand that dynamic, and I would just note, for example, today, that the Federal Reserve Chairman, uh, Jerome Powell, actually made specific mention of local governments being a critical factor in the economic recovery, uh, and, and really speaking to Congress about the need to do something. So, uh, just, just to understand, we're not, I don't think anyone's saying we don't want to fill these positions, it's just a question of timing.
Okay, thank you. Well, I'd like to open up the floor again, instead of going in a round, um, if council would simply identify themselves by name and I'll recognize you. Any additional questions or concerns? Anyone? Okay, well then, I'll continue to ask a couple more questions, if no one else would like the floor first. All right, now I'd like to talk about, and I would, I would like to see how council is feeling about the proposed budget that's been presented to us. Yes, sir?
I'd like to ask something after you're done.
Okay, Mr. Griggs, you go first.
No, no, go ahead, I can wait.
No, no, because I was gonna change to a big topic. You go first, Mr. Griggs.
Okay, I, I'm not totally convinced that we're really increasing the budget in our street lighting. I, I'm, I've looked at the, the predicted bu, or the budget for twenty and twenty-one, but I'm not really seeing the increase. I must be missing something. Uh, I don't know what it is, but I just know, you know, I know that we're making, or excuse me, we're not paying as much money as we transition to LED lights. Therefore, we've got to be saving money, or we've got to be, uh, in industry, they'd be called a cost avoidance. And I know we've got to have a cost avoidance with this new LED lighting. I know the fixtures to begin with, uh, may cost more, but I know that our u, u, utility has, uh, costs have come down. And I'm just not convinced that we're really increasing our street lighting budget. And I, I don't know if Mr. Scorsone can react or respond to that, but I'm still not convinced that I'm seeing an increase in our street lighting budget. Thank you.
Mr. Scorsone, would you like to respond?
Sure, um, so, the information I have in front of me, which should be the same thing you have, um, is our two thousand twenty amended budget was, uh, for appropriation of three point one three million. And our appropriations for two thousand twenty-one recommended budget are two mil, uh, two point eight three four million. So as I see it, the budget is down about two hundred thousand roughly. Um, I do wish Suzanne, unfortunately, she had a conflict, there's a, a zoning board meeting at the same time. Um, because she honestly knows a little more detail about this, but, um, that was the recommended budget as before in our discussion. So, yeah, it actually is down about two hundred thousand.
Uh, that, that's what I've noticed, and I don't think it should be down, uh, because I know we're saving money with our new LED lighting. Uh, and, uh, utility costs to consumers' energy. So I guess we'll just have to wait till Suzanne gets back on board. Thank you.
Yeah, sure, we'll, we'll try and look into that for you.
Okay, appreciate it.
Um, thank you, Mr. Scorsone, Mr. Griggs. Um, regarding that topic, I, I wish Legal were on the line because I do have a question. We pay for our street lighting and our garbage through assessments. My question is, I have heard that it actually, the, for example, the, the garbage collection, what is being charged to us is actually less than what we are assessing to other people. And if what you are saying right now is true, that the street lighting budget, um, is, is down by two hundred thousand, are we still, what's the legality of if we are still assessing for every lot for streetlights, but we are actually spending less on street lighting? Where is the legality in that?
Uh, this is Angela.
Oh, there you are, hi.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I, I, I joined late, so, um, but, so, yeah, yeah, so, um, so what are we, wh, wh, what's the question again?
Well, Mr. Scorsone just explained to Mr. Griggs and council that the budget on street lighting is down about two hundred thousand. And, and my question is, we assess per lot for both street lighting and garbage, okay? Where's the legality and don't we need to spend as much as we are assessing? If, if we are assessing more than it actually cost us, is that legal?
Um, yeah, I'd have to look into that to see what the state law says on what our maxims are. I don't know, Eric, if you, if you know, if you're familiar with the, um, maxims are offhand?
Um, I don't, I mean, I'm not, so I can't give you a legal opinion, but I can at least say that generally speaking, with these kind of assessments, you are correct, and we should charge what it costs us, um, as a rule of accounting at least. And, um, we have reduced, so what we do is, we, we're gonna provide you with a master fee schedule, we do reduce street lighting fees, uh, to correspond with what we expect to be less spending. Now, the truth is, you know, we go through the year and we, we have a budget, but obviously that budget may be right or wrong, so I mean, we're doing the best we can. And just as an example, my, I just ran a report, I mean, as of today, we have spent, um, we had a budget, as I said, of three point one million, but we've actually only spent two point one million, um, which is, um, you know, we're eighty, what are we, eighty some, eighty-five percent through the fiscal year, and we've only spent sixty-six percent. So, uh, now I don't know, there may be costs that come in at the end of the year, so I have to be a little careful here because sometimes there's accounting that happens at, in June, but, but at the moment, I mean, it does seem like we're underspending relative to what we expected. And so, you know, it may make sense that we should be then setting rates differently to reflect that reality. Now, I don't know all the details, and Suzanne would know better why we are spending less, I don't know, honestly, but, um, but that's, yeah, you're right, I mean, the general thumb is to spend, whatever you spend, that's how you set the rates, and, but, you know, you can build up some fund balance too. It's not, it's not unallowed, so that can happen.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Scorsone. I, I think Angela, although we're not doing formal referral requests during this budget session, because we're not equipped to do that, um, I think you get the gist of what I'm asking, and, and I would like to understand that better, especially in view towards the more streetlights that we change out to LED lighting, as Mr. Griggs has pointed out, the less it's going to cost us to pay for our lighting. So I, I would like to know how that all works in legally with what we are then assessing people for those services.
Okay, I would just say. This is Stacy.
Stacy, can I be recognized? Please.
Um, another thing that takes effect of the street lighting is that we do several combos a year. And so that does take down the actual amount of lots and parcels that that number is divided into, so that could be part of it as well.
Okay, good point.
Councilman Fields?
Yep.
This is Rob.
Uh, Rob, yeah.
Yeah, the short, I think, I think, uh, Eric touched on it. The, the short answer is, if, if we're taking in more money, um, than what we're spending, there'll be a fund balance that we'll run, um, and then we would adjust, um, but like Stacy said, there's a number of factors. It, it's kind of the same with garbage as well. Um, we'll often run a small fund balance, um, and maybe adjust the fee as we go forward, depending on, you know, how it looks. So it's kind of a, you know, it's kind of a tricky balance there, you're kind of walking, you know, walking a fine line to, to not gain fund balance and to, to assess the proper amount to all of the, all the residents, so it, and it's always changing because the number of residents is always changing, and lots, and, and addresses and all that things, so.
Right.
One thing I would, one thing I would like to add, um, and you guys will probably find this entertaining like I do. So, when you deal with.
That's right.
Yeah, same, same.
Okay.
So, so when you deal with consumers on street lighting, you would think that consumers would meter, uh, they have an electric meter for all of the fees for all the different streetlights, but they don't. Uh, they actually charge you a flat rate, and when, when a light is changed out to an LED, they change, they charge you a new, lower flat rate. Um, so they've always done it that way. Um, I've had some push on for traffic signals, because traffic signals are done the same way. Um, as well as, um, you know, we've been in conversation about street lighting as well. But they, they kind of charge a flat, a flat rate, and, um, they do adjust it as they replace, uh, as we replace signals and/or streetlights with LEDs, they adjust it down, but we don't get actually metered, um, the, the true cost of the power. So, you know, we could be less or we could be more, it's, it's kind of, it's kind of screwed up the way they do it.
Okay, well, I guess overall, like I say, there are, you know, many more important things, you're dealing with more immediate things, I should say, not more important. Because anytime we're charging a resident taxes and assessments, that's very important to them and to us. But, um, I, I would like to have some sense of the legality of what we can assess, you know, when it, and the saving and fund balance versus what it's actually costing us. Um, maybe when you get some free time, Miss Wheeler, whenever that is, um, uh, you could point me towards some documents that can help me understand that better.
Yeah, let's, let's, if we can do that, and I would just say, so, um, we can make sure that we don't mix anything that would be in a meeting. When I say a meeting, I mean a, a, a quorum, that we would just do that separately so that we can, um, keep those things separate. But I understand you want, you're looking for a special budget, but if we can, you know, keep this to the budget Q and A, I think that would be helpful. But I, I, I did hear what you said, and I, and I received that.
Okay, well, um, I, and I'm in agreement, but I just think that what we're budgeting is definitely tied into what we're assessing. So, okay, well, um, would anyone else like the floor at this time? Okay, I have a bigger question then, and I would like to hear from council about what their thoughts are on the overall proposed budget, okay, is using, uh, a considerable amount of fund balance. And it has been explained to us by Mr. Scorsone, um, that this is largely due to our legacy retirement costs. Okay, I would just like to hear from council what their thoughts are on the use of this fund balance in the proposed budget.
Uh, Ms. Fields?
Yes, Mr. Davis?
Yeah, thank you. I could just say, this is just my honest opinion. Right now, i- i- times is lean, even with the COVID virus, you know, things happen unforeseen even in your own household, and it get tight. And I feel like this, and I done been broke before, but I survive it. Every night in.
Whoops, I lost Mr. Davis, Davina. He's still on?
Uh, yeah, he's still showing.
Mr. Davis, did you mute yourself?
Okay, no, he dropped, I'll unmute him.
He dropped. Well, we'll come back to him when he reconnects with us. Okay, let's go on, is there another person? Whoop.
Madam, yes, here. Councilman Winfrey, you know, I'm, I'm glad. Yes, ma'am, thank you. I'm glad to see us address this legacy cost. You know, we've been talking about this legacy cost, uh, since I've been on council. And we've been behind in the amount of money that we're paying, and at some point in time, we knew that we were gonna have to address it. And so I'm glad to see it's being addressed in this budget. Uh, I, I, I mean, can you imagine if you were a city, uh, retiree and you wake up one morning and, uh, you, you don't get paid? We, we, I think this is a good idea. You know, in fact, we've had some discussion in other budget meetings, uh, last year, when Councilman Mays wanted to move some money for police, and I, I, I wished we had enough money to do that, because I didn't think that that was, uh, uh, that was a bad idea. But I was more concerned with, uh, with the legacy cost that we had seemed to be, seemed to not, I, I don't want to use the word ignoring, but I knew that we were not putting in the amount that we should have been putting in. Now, we still may not be, but at least we begin to address it, so I think that's a good thing. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Winfrey. Anyone else?
Eva?
Yeah, Eva, yes, Ms. Worthy.
Yes, um, so I went to, uh, a finance, uh, meeting in Frankenmuth not too long ago. And they actually said that our, um, general fund was way too large and that most municipalities will have a place to put that. So I'm in agreement, I believe Davis was on the same track as what Mr. Winfrey said, that we actually needed to start dipping into that, uh, to start paying some of this, uh, and, and get on track. I, I hope that we do have, you know, a general fund after this year, but, uh, it was too large. And I'm, I'm glad that we did save up though, and we were able to do this. So, um, good job for council for not, uh, spending frivolously, and that's all.
Thank you, Ms. Worthy. Anyone else?
Yeah, Ms. Field?
Yes, is that, Mr. Davis there? You are okay? We lost you.
Yeah, my phone was gonna drop. Just when I was just gonna get into, I thought a decent spill, but anyway, legacy costs, you know, as these retire, these retire, it get bigger and bigger than the ones working. But now with this, you know, um, pandemic on hand, less people working, the whole United States economy is in trouble. So we just gotta just buckle down, and I'm sure that's what the administration doing, as well as with this body, working one accord and try to make lemonade out of these lemons. I mean, the whole country, we, we can't, we cannot sustain ourselves working against each other. And that just comes into sense, every household got to buckle down. And, you know, and, and that's just where we at. We get brilliant minds on board in administration. Utilize it, just so the world have changed, and I don't know how long, I ain't never seen this in my lifetime. But I do know this, if we don't put our all hands on deck and make lemons out of lemonade budget with the legacy costs and everything else, w, this is not business as usual. I just hope we continue to just work it out at whatever means necessary, and I thank you, Ms., uh, Fields, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Anyone else? Mr. Griggs, you have any comments?
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd just like to say too, I agree, that I don't think that, uh, the fund balance that we are, we're dipping into is, you know, is just something that we can play with, but it's something that we need to use for important things, and as Mr. Winfrey pointed out, you're right. I couldn't imagine being a retiree, uh, and one day not get paid, uh, and we can't, we can't risk that happening, so, um, unfortunately, you know, we have to dip into that balance. But I understand why the administration's doing so, and I support them.
Thank you. Mr. Griggs? Mr. Greg? Mr. Greg, do you have an opinion or comment?
Yeah, I've just, uh, trying to find the unmute. Uh, Mr. Bensick said that we have thirteen openings in the water department and I haven't seen those jobs posted. Is what is the real reason that we're not posting for those thirteen jobs? I mean, are we trying to just hold off or, I really don't understand. I'd, I'd like to know why we're not posting for those thirteen jobs. And, and that's to Mr. Bensick. Thanks.
Ms. Chair?
Yes, sir? Mr. Bensick?
Councilman Greg, the jobs were posted and we had, uh, we had established a list, excuse me, they went through the first round of, uh, testing and we were right at the point of, uh, sending them into, uh, the, the physical aptitude test and that's when the COVID virus hit. So we just, we, the, we stopped, um, the recruitment and really are just waiting, uh, until we can somewhat get on the other side of this and in the tent portfolio position.
Okay, I, I guess I understand because I see all the job postings and I just don't recollect seeing those thirteen jobs posted, but, okay, I understand. Thank you.
Since the hiring freeze, there's only been, and I, I'm not sure if anybody's made hires of yours, there's only been very limited postings, um, you know, by, I mean, that's, that's the directive that was given out. So, um, I think you've just seen a couple of, uh, blight officer postings that have come across and I think with the exception of that, maybe, maybe the HR director position and the CFO position, other than that, there hasn't been anything posted, uh, for hiring because there, there hasn't been a directive given for a hiring freeze.
Yeah, that is all I've seen posted of those particular jobs you just mentioned. Okay, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Greg, one of the questions I had just posed to all council people was, do you have any opinion or comment on the proposed budget which, uh, proposes to use fund balance for our legacy cost, uh, versus not using fund balance for our legacy cost?
I'm, you mean, do I have an opinion on that?
Yeah.
No, I don't at this time. Thank you, though.
Okay. All right, well, I would like to ask Mr. Scorsone, um, in the past where we've had meetings, okay, he has discussed the revenue, anticipated revenue, and he's talked about due to the pandemic, there, we may have to, even after we pass a budget, a budget, more than likely, we're going to have to amend that budget in the coming two, three months once we find out how the revenue changes are affecting us. And, um, part of the, you know, the areas that we know of would be state revenue sharing, um, Act 51 money, the street maintenance money, um, income tax and payment of water and sewer bills. Could you give us an update, Mr. Scorsone, on what you're seeing, what the trend is currently?
Sure. Um, so also with property taxes, um, we don't see any major changes in property taxes at this time. Um, we may in the future, but I think as a tax collection this summer, there may be some increased delinquencies, but, you know, we generally expect that to be pretty stable for the moment. Um, certainly taxable values won't be affected in the immediate term. Uh, as far as income tax, we, we are seeing a slight decline, although I have to say less than I would have expected for now. Um, partially because I think, um, you know, the way our community's been structured, we just haven't seen, you know, you, you would, you know, unemployment is obviously very high in the United States right now. Uh, we don't have local figures on unemployment because that's put out with a lag. Um, so we'll have to see if income taxes fall, uh, further. Um, as far as, uh, state revenue sharing, you know, that will be determined by the governor who is going to have to do a budget rescission in the next thirty days. But it, I also caution us because, um, they've called for an August revenue forecasting conference, which is extremely unusual. So my guess is because of the delays in the state income tax collection, in fact, our own income tax collections are also delayed, you know, we won't have a great idea of everything until August. Um, gas taxes are down, people are driving less, so we will have that impact, um, isolated to the major street fund and local street fund. Um, water and sewer revenues, as I've told you before, are down, although actually they were up a little bit so far in May, not up, but not as down as they were. Um, that could be because of stimulus checks or some other factors perhaps, um, but they're still down. On average, our collection rate is more towards seventy-five, eighty percent still at this time. Um, so basically, you know, the revenues are down, uh, but we were doing a little better than we would have thought, let's say, up to March, so we have a little bit of cushion to get through this fiscal year, which is another five weeks roughly. Um, and then I, you know, as far as 2021, we're just going to have to wait and see. And I don't think we'll have a clear picture until July, August, honestly, as to where our revenues are likely to be. Um, we, we take it very, you know, I think the mayor takes it very seriously, the use of fund balance. Uh, we understand that's a serious decision to be made, um, but we also believe it costs, you know, what we provide you is what it costs to run the city and so we want to balance those things.
Okay. I'm, I'm sorry, who's speaking? Is, oh, okay, I think that's just background. Um, could I ask you please, what are the ramifications for the city if we don't use fund balance?
So if we pass a budget, uh, so if we, um, do not use fund balance, which is the fourteen, fifteen million, that range, um, that would have serious consequences unfortunately. Um, so if you think about our budget, and I'm talking mostly general fund at the moment, that's seventy-two million dollars. Of that seventy-two million, twenty million roughly is pension cost and then another, say, let's just say roughly ten, ten to twelve million is retiree healthcare. So those are what we would call fixed costs in accounting or economics. And so those costs we have to pay, no matter whether we have one employee or five hundred employees. Um, so if you think about that seventy-two million, thirty-some million is a fixed cost. The other forty million is, is a, you know, a variable cost essentially. So we would have to cut fifteen million out of the forty million. So that's, you know, forty percent roughly. So, um, and the other factor is seventy-five percent of the general fund is labor costs. So, you know, that would mean a significant reduction in, in employment, basically. Now, how that's done and, and how those cuts occur, you know, I, I can't really speculate on, um, that's obviously a decision for, for the elected official to decide on. But, um, but I just kind of give you a sense of the numbers. It's, it's, it's a very daunting number, I understand, but that's the reality. We, we have fixed costs we're going to have to pay, um, and then we have a variable cost and that's the only cost we could really look at in terms of reduction. So as I think I prevented last time, we have about two hundred and fifty employees in the general fund, funded by the general fund, so you would have to look at reductions in those areas. And, um, and I, I will say this because I work with a lot of municipalities in the state. You know, Flint has cut a lot of people, a lot of services over time. Uh, there are other municipalities that have more flexibility, I would say, in terms of what changes they could make in these cases. Um, whereas I think Flint is much more, already done a lot of that, so it would be very difficult. Um, and I don't, you know, again, I can't say, you, you would have to all decide on what the details of that looks like, but that's, that's kind of what it would look like in general.
So essentially, we'd be looking at staffing cuts?
I mean, the reality is you have, yeah, you couldn't cut, I mean, even if you eliminated professional services supplies, um, you know, and we need some of those things and some of those things are critical. For example, our income tax collection is, is a professional service contract, um, you know, so you can't, you can't cut all of that stuff and still run the city. So, yeah, you would have to cut, so you could cut some of those supplies and other costs, but you would absolutely have to cut labor costs as well, absolutely, to a large, to a, a very large extent. And as we know, I mean, uh, as the chiefs have already laid out, police and fire are, you know, uh, we could eliminate those open positions, but we're already down in numbers substantially. I mean, Flint, by every measure of, of sort of objective measures of police and fire staffing is already below where we need to be, even if we fill all these open positions. So you would be looking at a minimum of, of probably eliminating all the open positions and probably potentially more as well. Because again, it's not just labor costs that are the majority of the cost, police and fire are the majority of that. So, um, if you just did a proportionate cut, you know, you would, you'd have significant reductions in staffing.
Okay, thank you. Um, at this time, would, uh, any other council people like to comment or ask questions, et cetera?
Yeah, Ms. Fields?
Mr. Davis?
Ms. Field, yes, thank you for indulging. Well, listening to Mr. Scorsone, Flint is, we lean as we could be. You know, I don't see why, how some people interpret this as being, let me use the word, uh, in the green, if you will, or in the black. We, we got to pay attention to every dime that come in and out the city. Uh, we're not, we're not favorable by no means. We, we really need to pay attention. Police and fire is running at a minimum. Our legacy costs is through the roof. We got to have all hands on deck as well as all minds. I wish our council, Fire Hills, our body council, would pay attention to this where we get on one accord and we work as diligent as the administration to try to correct some of these, these issues that we have, else we're in a world of trouble. Unless, I'm just interpreting it wrong, I'm listening thoroughly and I'm listening to the, the actual numbers. We got the, we got the button down, this is not a, nothing to be laughing and playing games with. We really must start paying attention immediately. Thank you for indulging, Ms. Fields.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Any other council person? Is there any, uh, concluding remarks the administration would like to make? Mr. Edwards?
Well, I would just, you know, I, I would just conclude by saying that, that, you know, a lot of work has gone into the budget. Um, obviously, uh, no budget will be satisfying to all, but it's just a matter of, uh, every effort was taken in this particular budget to ensure, um, that the, that the city would function properly, move forward properly, that the city would have, uh, the right kinds of services, people would, uh, maintain jobs and that, um, the citizens would benefit from the fact that they would see city government operating at least at the same level that it has been for the, the, the past year or so. Uh, so every, every, um, every consideration was taken, um, every department, uh, all the various aspects of departments, uh, all the nuances and things that we felt like, um, were important, uh, were under consideration. But ultimately, when this budget is finally crafted, presented to council, um, as Mr. Scorsone pointed out on, on a couple occasions, uh, there were oversights, uh, but those oversights ultimately, um, you know, as, as you pointed out, okay, they have to either come from somewhere or it's going to push the number up even higher. Uh, so everything is done to try to, um, keep the budget, uh, in alignment, as I said, with the kinds of services, not trying to shortchange the citizens, not trying to reduce anything. But as has been pointed out, even as, even as, um, the budget number that you see, uh, is evident, um, there's also new additions that have not been filled as a part of it. Uh, some have been cut out, some parts have been cut out of the budget to keep it around the, you know, the number that we're at. So, uh, you know, it, no, it's no question, council has a, council has a powerful job, uh, in looking at this and examining and making some determinations, uh, you know, how much lunar can this budget get? And before, before it passes a point at which, um, we're unable to function properly. So, um, there, there's a tall task and no question about it. We've tried to give you at least, uh, we've tried to sculpt something that council could work with and make some determinations. It is the mayor's, um, it is the mayor's, uh, sentiment that, um, we're able to move forward with this particular budget so that we may not, uh, even venture down the road of talking or having discussions about layoffs or other kinds of cuts. So we presented to you, uh, a good budget based on maintaining the level of services that citizens deserve. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. Well, if there are no other comments from anyone, I would like to thank you all for a very, uh, in the main, professional meeting. And, uh, I'd like to applaud everybody for really staying on task and on topic. And, uh, any further, uh, questions, I guess, can come up at the next council meeting on May twenty-sixth, which will be a regular meeting with regular rules. Uh, we're not having committee meetings, um, in order to reduce the labor intensive things that have to happen, which unfortunately expose our staffing. So, uh, council will have, you know, upon reflection, you will have an opportunity, uh, for more questions. Um, but if you have anything you'd like to submit to me in writing, I will then pass it along quickly to the administration and ask for written responses prior to the May twenty-sixth meeting. And we will be also having a, uh, meeting on, uh, June first, which is a Monday, um, according to city charter to adopt a budget. So on that note, I'd like to say we're actually at six fifty-six. I'm going to adjourn this meeting. Thank you all.